Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission meeting. We are a commission appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings and to make recommendations to the governing body on planning items. Please note, the governing body rules state that the public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the Planning Commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the governing body. Tonight, we have no cases, so the agenda items that do not, our agenda items do not involve public hearings. So, public comment will only be allowed for those that signed up for Topeka Speaks or notified staff prior to 5:00 p.m. today. Comments are limited to four minutes. At the reg, at the end of the regular business, the commission will entertain general comment regarding matters relating to the commission business, provided the person has signed up on Topeka Speaks and has notified staff prior to 5:00 p.m. today. Comments are limited to four minutes. Amanda, will you please take the role?
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Ms. Heron.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Kow.
Here.
Mr. Nager.
Here.
Ms. Pearson.
Here.
Mr. Tebabin.
Here.
Ms. Hanen.
Here.
We have enough for our quorum.
Thank you, Amanda. If everyone's had a chance to look at the minutes, I will take a motion for their approval.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve the minutes. Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All right. Amanda, can you please take the role?
Ms. Hanen.
Aye.
Mr. Tebabin.
Aye.
Ms. Pearson.
Aye.
Mr. Nager.
Obsteen.
Mr. Kow.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Heron.
Aye.
Mr. Dean.
Aye.
The minutes pass.
Thank you. Tonight's a little bit different, guys. We have no actual planning cases to review, but we do have items for discussion. And our first item is going to be a report from the Planning Commission Incentives Committee about proposed zoning code text amendments. I like a little bit more detail in my agendas. So, what I am proposing is that first we'll hear from Jim, the committee chairperson. He'll give us an overview of what the committee has done. For a little bit more detail, we'll hear from staff, whichever staff is most appropriate to speak on the amendments themselves. Then we'll go back to Jim for a wrap-up and summary. I have open comment for the commissioners on the report, and then we'll start talking about next steps related to the report. So, unless someone has any questions, I'll let Jim get started.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope you've all had the chance to, to read the, the committee report, and you also had a staff report from Dan. I, I know it's a lengthy document, but I will tell you, the whole time I've been on the Planning Commission, this is the first committee report that I've seen, so this is the shortest committee report to date, okay? I, I'm not going to go through the committee report in, in detail, but certainly will answer any questions about it, but I wanted to hit some, some of the key points that the committee came up with. And, and Will was on the committee, Del Mitreus is on the committee, and Katie, who's not here tonight, were, the four of us made up the committee. I, I am going to request, Madam Chair, that the committee report, kind of a formality, I'd like to have the committee report be part of the committee minutes, of the Planning Commission minutes, for, okay? First of all, I want to, I know you've heard this from us before in the, in the kind of the nutshell briefings that we've given you in prior meetings, most recently back in July, but surprised, Topeka has a housing problem, which is the case of the great majority of cities across the country. And the shortage is the shortage of safe and, and affordable housing. It would say that it's committee sense that, that the shortage of housing is not just an economic development issue, you know, not being able to house a workforce that allows the community to grow and prosper. It's a quality of life issue, first and foremost, and in some cases, it's a matter of life and death. I hate to say that, but pages one and two of the committee report, if you have, have it in front of you, has some of the data that we had concerning the extent of the shortage of both owner and renter occupied housing. And I think you know from previous briefings that kind of the touchstone that the committee had was the 2020 Topeka Housing Study, which I keep a coffee close at hand, on my nightstand, and, no, not quite, but it's, yeah, I've urged everybody to get a copy of it. I think it's, it's getting dated now. It's, the data is four or five years old, but it's a good study. It's a lot of information on every page. I think it was money well spent by the city. Greatly summarized, the 2020 report states that there's a shortage of housing, in particular, our focus, a shortage of affordable housing, both owner occupied and, and renter occupied housing. And it's to the tune of thousands. It's not a, not a few score dwelling units, it's thousands of, of units that were short. And if anything, I think it's the committee's conclusion, that if anything, over the last four or five years since the study was done, the situation has worsened. I think that is a, you know, we may lack some hard data at, at this point to back that up, but a lot of anecdotal information and kind of a common sense understanding. We all look at real estate prices and how appraisals have gone up, and the listings for, for, for homes has gone up dramatically in Topeka in the last few years. And we also have information that tells us that the, that's reflected in the rents that people pay. And certainly, the median income over the last five years has not kept pace with the rise of cost of both owner occupied and, and renter occupied housing. So, the situation's worse than it was. I think, committee, you agree, right? Back me up, Will. That, the situation's worse today than it was when the study was done. It was bad enough when, when the study was printed. And you can also look, and it's in the, in the committee report, some of the building permit data that we have, the staff provided for the last couple of years. I mean, it's great, it's great that people are building, but they're not building units fast enough, either single family or multifamily. It's, we're not keeping pace with the formation of, or what we think the, the interest is in, in having new household formations or being able to bring folks into the community. Well, okay. The, the committee activity, you know, we've been at this since last March, meeting with staff, numerous meetings with staff, to try to identify things we could do in the toolbox. You know, the toolbox being the Topeka Development Code. That's what, we all, sitting as a planning commission, we can't make changes to the Development Code, but we can advocate, we can endorse and recommend changes to the governing body to the Development Code. So, that's, that's what we have to work with. And we examine the Development Code with the staff's assistance to identify any, any provision in the Development Code with respect to housing, and the regulations for the residential districts, regulations that really might not be necessary anymore, or are unnecessarily severe, to, to remove anything that we thought was an unnecessary obstacle to construction. And as we'll talk about, in a, in a couple of minutes, we'll, there's some other ideas too, that, that maybe leak out, kind of push the envelope perhaps, in, in the Development Code, but, but things I think are worthy of, of discussion. And those, I know you wanted some detail about those amendments, but if I could defer to Dan to, to go through in his staff report, Dan and Mike working on the, provide the detail, and you've heard almost everything before. And I don't mean to disparage what we're doing, because I, I think it was helpful, what the staff did was, was good. The recommendations we're giving to you tonight, and asking for your consent to put it on the agenda for September for public hearing, they're all good, rational, appropriate amendments to be made. And again, without disparaging them, I'll say it's the low hanging fruit. You know, there are, there are provisions that the staff was already, in part, at least, the staff was already working on some of these, and identified regulations that could be liberalized or reduced down, made more development friendly. So, we are recommending the, the amendments that Dan's going to go over in a moment. I think we're also saying it's reflected in the, in the staff, in the, in the committee report, that there's more work to be done. And we do our work at the pleasure of the Planning Commission and the chair, but we do have some ideas that we've kicked around a little bit, that may need more discussion, more study, more vetting with interested parties. But, but tonight, it'd be good, and speaking for the committee, it'd be good to get some sense of the Planning Commission as to whether or not we're on the same page, just, if, if you would like us to, to continue the work, or, in the alternative, create a new committee, or, or take up the matter, Planning Commission at large. Anyway, before I forget, I think, I want to thank the members of the committee for, for the work that, that they've done and the effort that's been made. So, if I could, Madam Chair, if I could ask Dan and Mike to, to run through the, the specific amendments that we're proposing for September hearing.
Thank you. That was a good overview. I'm going to be presenting these slides, so I think you're on the first slide with text on it. One thing I want to just point out is, one of the meetings of the committee was with housing advocates and developers to get their, you know, real pragmatic look at this, at what we're doing, and that was really helpful. I thought we had a good turnout, we had several, including the affordable, some affordable housing developers. So, that was, that was really a strong point of the committee, I think. It was a very robust discussion. So, so one thing about the, I probably won't do this word for word, because Commissioner Kow did it pretty well, but the, the citywide housing market study that was done in 2020, the goal of the study was to establish actionable strategies to improve the existing housing stock and meet future demand for housing. So, some of the key findings is that, are, that 30% of households in Topeka are cost burdened, meaning they pay more than 30% of their income on housing. Topeka's projected to need 4,000 additional units of affordable housing over the next 20 years. And this is starting in 2021, so 20 years beyond the 2020 study. 3,650 units of workforce housing are needed over the next 20 years. 2,250 units are needed for seniors over the next 20 years. I guess I operated this on. So, there are multiple strategies in the housing study. Two of those is to support, to support development of a diverse mix of housing types, and to expand production of affordable housing. So, one thing that we want to kind of make clear is that what the Planning Commission can affect is somewhat limited in the entire toolbox. The tools are listed here. Community development block grant funding and other resources are administered by the Topeka Housing Services that, that support housing and provide services to support housing. They, some of those services include rehabilitation, or, or loans, funding for rehabilitation of existing housing stock. We also have something called the reinvestment housing incentive district, which is, is a, something the state adopted, allowing cities to provide some kind of incentive for housing development. The City of Topeka has also started a land bank, has established a land bank, and that's being, that's, that's being implemented. So, where the Planning Commission really comes, comes in is with the subdivision and zoning regulations. There might be other regulations too, that can be changed or revised to support housing, or do more to support housing, to lower barriers or obstacles to housing development, such as the building codes. So, in addition to our zoning and subdivision regulations, the city has, has building codes. They have the, the International Residential Code and the International, International Building Code, and, and those affect housing development. Okay, so, in, in the memo from the committee, there, there's a chart in there that lists the number of permits. So, I looked at that, and then what I dug a little deeper and found are the number of units that were, that were permitted through those permits. And this is what, where we're at today. So, on the far right, that's from 2021 through the year-to-date in 2024. So, that total on the far right, that comes to about 600, as I recall. I think 600's the number I came up with.
Like, could I?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just, so people can track between this slide and, and the committee's report, the committee reported permits that were issued. This is the units.
Correct.
So, one permit could be, obviously could be multiple, multiple units.
Right. So, for every permit for a duplex, there are two units.
Right.
And then multifamily's going to be a range. One other, there's a number in there that's kind of high, in 2021, and that reflects a large project, Wheatfield Village. Wheatfield Village is certainly not an affordable housing community. It provided much-needed housing stock. I don't want to discount that, but, but that's, that really contributes to that large number of multifamily units. So, digging a little further into the numbers here, we've estimated how many affordable units out of these numbers. And if you look through 2023, I think it's about 16% of the units that have been produced are in the affordable category. And affordable generally is units, dwellings that are affordable to households at a level of 60% of area median income or below. I'll go back to that slide.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding this slide correctly. We're short thousands since 2020, and over the past five years, we've only gained about 600?
Yeah, so that, year-to-date, since 2020, it comes to 648 units total. Through 2023, it is 592.
So, that's how many units we've gained over the past?
Yes.
Four, almost five years?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and only about 16% of those through 2023 are affordable.
So, even less than the 600, probably?
Quite a bit less.
Right.
Yeah, about 16%.
Right.
I think it's 16%.
Mike, does this planning department track units that are actually constructed? And is, is it pretty close, the actual construction, close to what, to these numbers?
I believe, well, that's based on permits, so there's a chance that not all of these have been built. I'd say that's a pretty low chance. By the time someone gets a permit, they're, they're going to build. Now, a planning approval, for example, if someone gets a conditional use permit for an apartment project, in fact, we have one, and we, the city council approved a conditional use permit for some apartments that you recommended, and we have not seen any building permit applications for those units yet. So, those haven't been permitted yet. So, there's a chance, but by the time someone does permits, usually those are going to get built, because there's a considerable amount of effort that goes into getting permits. As Commissioner Dean knows, you have to put together the construction documents to get those permits, and, and usually by that time, someone's serious and they're going to go through with it. There are exceptions. The Calamar Project being one. But, anyway...
So, it's about 80 units, is what you're telling me? I can't do math that well, so...
Uh, yeah, I think it was 87, actually.
87?
I think, I think the number was 87.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting better at that.
I won't take the time to look through my notes, but...
So, 87 affordable housing uses since 2020?
Uh, yeah, not including 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, as part of this exercise, one thing we always like to do is see where Topeka compares with other cities. And we kind of have the usual suspects, I like to call them, those are the mid-sized cities in Kansas and in our region, northeast Kansas primarily, but could also mean Wichita. But we also looked at some other larger cities, or cities that are, that probably have more growth pressures, maybe higher land costs, like in this case Rochester, Minnesota, Sacramento, California. It's interesting, Rochester's population is actually very close to Topeka's. Rochester is where the Mayo Clinic is located, and I don't know a lot about Rochester, but I think it's a thriving city. But, but anyhow, I think what's important here is, if you look at our, our setback requirements in particular, and you compare the, our R1 district and our 2 district with the similar districts in the other cities, the setback requirements, the front setback, rear setback, and side setback are pretty similar. There are some exceptions, but, and some of them are, you know, like, our, for example, our R1 district, our current front setback requirement is 30 feet, and in the others, it tends to be 25, in some cases 20. And then you look at the other cities like Rochester and Sacramento, and it's much less. Okay, so, this is what is being proposed right now. And so, what you can see there, I'm having a hard time seeing the screen myself, but, but reducing the overall minimum lot area required for R1 and R2, and the other districts as well. And these are minimum requirements, so that doesn't mean that someone has to plat at that size, they can plat larger lots. These are minimum lot sizes, and minimum lot widths. So, I won't go over, I won't repeat what's on the screen there, but you can see what those are. And they're in your packet as well. And then, the last row on that chart, it has maximum density standards. So, that's number of units per acre, maximum. So, some substantial changes are proposed for the density standards, but there's a reason for that, there's a basis for that. Okay, so, this is just to give you some context, some frame of reference. So, this is a subdivision in southwest Topeka, Colley Creek Number 10, and this is, in terms of the minimum lot width, this is just above the minimum lot width of 60 for this zoning And this gives you an idea of what that looks like. Whoops, I didn't mean to do it. Okay, that's weird. Anyway, that's what's being built on those lots. So, those are, those are not really small houses, those are pretty good sized houses. Those are three-car garages, and I can't remember how big some of these, I think these are over 2,000 square feet, maybe over 3,000 with a basement. Okay, so this is another subdivision, also in southwest Topeka, it's Colley Creek Number 8. This has much smaller lot sizes, 50-foot minimum widths, or 50-foot widths in most cases, 110-foot depth. 110 is actually currently in our subdivision code, that's the minimum lot depth. So, you can see what that looks like. The key here, though, is that was not approved under current zoning, that was, that was approved under PUD zoning, where, where a variance can be incorporated in that zoning district, that zoning classification. And that's what these look like, they're two-car garages, they're relatively smaller homes, but not, you know, they're, they're not really, they're not what I'd call tiny homes. Okay, so, if you look for floor plans that'll fit on a smaller lot, there are a number of different floor plans available. This slide is just intended to show you that, yes, it's possible to build homes that are relatively narrow on, on a 50-foot wide lot. Okay, this slide addresses the setback. So, what is being proposed is, only in the R1 district, reducing the setback from 30 feet on the front to 25 feet. Again, there's a minimum setback required, and reducing the side setback from seven to five, and reducing the rear from 30 to 25. So, the reason this is significant is some of the feedback we received, and this is from, from our stakeholders, who spoke directly to the committee, was that every increase in setback increases costs, because you have to have water lines, you have to have the sewer line, that's all a cost. The length of the driveway is a cost. Lot width affects the cost of infrastructure, because every, typically the sewer, the san, the public sewer, the sanitary sewer, and the public water main, those go down the street. So, the wider the lot, the longer the, the, the infrastructure, the sewer main extension, the water main extension, all contributing to cost. So, this is an example, just to give you an idea of what this means in terms of setbacks. The slide on the left just shows the difference in the setback, and the slide, not the slide, but the, the exhibit on the right just shows you what a house would look like under these revised setbacks on a lot. Okay, so the density standards. Again, these are maximum density standards, so this would increase, for example, M2 district, currently the maximum density is 15 units per acre. This would increase the maximum density to 25 in M2. M2 is probably the most common multifamily residential zoning district out there. If you think of conventional, what I, what some people call garden-style apartments, garden apartments, two stories, three stories, those are usually in M2 districts, or in PUD districts with M2 as a use group, as a use classification. So, here's some examples. So, this is at 17th and High. I think if you look at this, if you're familiar with this, these two apartment buildings, they don't, they don't look like they're that dense, they're two stories, or two and a half stories. But this is 21 units per acre. The way it's designed, it's, it fits in pretty well with its surroundings, partly because the parking is in the rear. So, one other thing to notice here is that the parking on this is 10 units with 10 off-street parking spaces. So, this one, this, this project, I don't know when this was built, I think it was built in the 50s. This is non-conforming. This has not conformed to our current zoning code, in terms of its density, in terms of its parking. So, this is a, an interesting kind of a mid-century modern type of design, 13th and Fillmore. This is 29 units per acre. I think most people would see this and say, yeah, it kind of fits in pretty well, it's two stories tall, 12 parking spaces. So, again, does not conform to our current zoning standards, but fits in pretty well. So, this, this is another project, close to the other one that was prior to the, one before the last slide. This is on 17th and Webster. This is actually 34 units per acre. It's two stories plus a basement level, and 18 parking spaces. So, this gives you an idea of a little higher density, kind of a mid, what I'd call a mid-rise apartment building. This happens to be zone D1. If this was in an M3 district, it wouldn't comply with the current standards for M3 zoning. D1 does not actually have a density standard. Also, off-street parking is not required in D1, but if this was, this could potentially be an M3, except it doesn't meet the current density standards. This is relatively dense, 71 units per acre, and a lot of that's because there's very little surface parking. There's a, there's a structured parking on the first level, and that makes a big, big difference in how, what you can achieve with density. So, the other recommendation from the committee is to have a bonus, a density bonus. So the other recommendation from the committee is to have a bonus, a density bonus, to support affordable housing. This is fairly modest, actually, but it seems realistic in our discussion. And what it is, is it would allow someone, if they were going to commit to doing affordable housing for a portion of the project, they could get a density increase of forty percent for a minimum of thirty percent of the units being affordable housing. This would apply in the M2 and M3 zoning districts. So affordable, in this sense, means affordable to households with an income of sixty percent of area median income. So this is an example, here's an example. So let's say you have a one-acre site, zone M2. Assuming the changes in the standards recommended on the previous slides, that would be twenty-five units on that site, twenty-five units per acre. The developer would be allowed to build to a density of thirty-five units, because they would get a forty percent bonus. If rent is kept to a level affordable to households with an income of sixty percent or less of AMI, or at least thirty percent of the units, so eleven of the thirty-five units. So something that the committee did discuss, but needs a little more study, is the need to reduce parking requirements for residential. So for most multifamily residential development, take D1 zoning out of it, but for most other residential development, two parking stalls per unit are required. There are some exceptions, but it's two parking stalls per unit. If you look at the parking requirements of some of the other cities that are in northeast Kansas, for example, those are going to be about one and a half parking spaces per unit, one point seven-five parking spaces per unit. So our parking standards for multifamily residential are pretty high, and sometimes they don't really make sense. If all of the units are two-bedroom units, maybe they do, but, you know, they're, in some cases they're studio units, in some cases they're one-bedroom units. So the other potential amendment that was discussed was to allow duplexes in some other multifamily residential development in R1 and R2 districts by conditional use permit. So currently, that requires rezoning. And sometimes amending the zoning map is a problem. A conditional use permit is, it's the same process as a rezoning, but it doesn't, it means, it doesn't require that you're amending the zoning map. So that, those are the slides that I have. Questions or comments?
I do have one, real quick, since you just went over it. It feels like we've been talking about reducing the parking requirements for a little while now. How, I think I read in the report, maybe within six months, is there any way that can be done sooner, or why is the process feel very lengthy?
There's a need to look at our parking requirements overall, for all land uses. We find that they're somewhat out of date. There's nothing in our parking code, for example, that allows you to share parking. That doesn't, not that it prohibits shared parking, but it doesn't give you credit for sharing parking, for example. And that's one way to reduce parking requirements, is to share parking among uses. So really, our entire parking chapter really needs to be looked at, and we're working on that right now. That takes some effort, some research, a lot of testing. You want to test what you're proposing to change on real projects, and so it does take a while. So I don't, I would not want to say, yes, we can do it sooner than six months. Six months goes by really quickly, so...
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Cup?
Yeah, Commissioner, just wanted to remind everybody, when we talk about the proposed amendments that would change the minimums, just the minimums on the dimensional standards, minimums mean minimums. If I want to go out and develop a residential subdivision of ten-acre lots and have ninety feet setback, front yard setbacks, and a hundred-and-eighty-foot rear yard setbacks, I can do that, if I've got the land, I can do that. These are minimums that would be established. Another thing I wanted to mention, Mike noted that the affordable incentive, the bonus, is modest, okay? And I would agree with that, it is modest at best. And the reason for that is that we have so little land in Topeka that's zoned M2 and M3, and that's what the incentive applies to. You know, if, you know, it was never part of our mission to propose rezonings of areas. I mean, the city doesn't like to initiate rezonings, understandably, but there is a shortage of, there is very little land, I should say, very little land area in the city. We've had the statistics presented before about what that percentage of the land area is, but it's because of that, because there's so little area, M2 and M3, that this bonus incentive would apply to, that, you know, we're sitting, waiting for somebody to come forward with a rezoning application to M2 and M3 specifically to avail themselves of the bonus, so, you know. Hopefully that'll happen the day after the amendment's adopted, but maybe, maybe not.
It will, it will. Well, actually, do you want to, first, thank you, Michael. Do you want to finish summarizing some of the next steps that are proposed through the report?
Yeah, if I could, Commissioner, and Mike mentioned the discussion about duplexes as a conditional use, and maybe threeplexes and fourplexes, there was a little bit of discussion about that with the committee, and I think in deference to the staff's, I think legitimate concerns that proposals like that need to be vetted. That's why they're not being presented to you tonight for scheduling for public hearing. But I would note, there are two ways, in looking at the literature, there are two ways that cities around the country have dealt with trying to encourage housing construction. One is you deal with the dimensional issues, like we have to allow denser development, encourage infill development, so forth. Some cities, I just recently found that the city of Houston, which is known for, you know, no zoning, but they do have very extensive development requirements in Houston, they just, a few years ago, lowered their single-family minimum lot size area from five thousand square feet to fourteen hundred, one thousand four hundred square feet. You know, in Houston, and cause and effect, there are thousands of units being constructed in Houston. Now, Houston's not Topeka, Topeka's not Houston, but it's an example of what some other cities have done, dimensional-wise, in dealing with height, lot area, and so forth, to put more housing units on a smaller, or actually on a standard-sized lot, you just, you increase the number of units that can go in. The other way, and it's kind of a segue into talking about duplexes, is you increase the land area, increase the types of uses that are allowed within a zoning district. Some cities would create a brand-new zoning district that would allow single-family and duplexes permitted uses, but we haven't talked about that, we may talk about that at some point, but creating a new zoning district doesn't make things happen. We have seen, in places, not a lot of places, but some places around the country, have opened up the single-family zoning to allow, to allow either as conditional uses or permitted uses, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. It's been a topic of some controversy around the country. Minneapolis, Topeka's not Minneapolis, but Minneapolis, Minnesota, not Kansas, did away with single-family zoning a number of years ago, and there is no such thing as single-family zoning in Minneapolis.
That's my solution to everything, is just to get rid of single-family.
And the states of California and Maryland, because those states, state governments felt that local governments weren't doing enough to encourage housing, they created mandates. And if you have single-family zoning in at least certain size cities in Maryland and California, your single-family zoning by action of state law now allows duplexes as permitted uses. So, anyway, those are, you know, talking about the potential for duplexes as a conditional use in the R1 district is something that we would like to study further and have more conversation about. Triplexes and fourplexes may be a bridge too far. Duplexes may be a bridge too far, I don't know yet. You know, we, committee doesn't know yet, we need to get input from folks about it, but it is a topic that I think makes great good sense to encourage infill development. And I've noticed that the 2020 study, in one of its recommendations, spoke positively about duplexes as making, you know, viable, economically viable, to accomplish infill development. One other, mention one other if I could, Commissioner, that we just mentioned in passing, I mentioned in passing, and nobody jumped out at it, in a positive way, anyway, was the idea of creating different types of, different standards in residential subdivisions, which again could be a controversial matter. But it would involve, you call them type A, type B, whatever you want to style it, subdivisions, a new type of subdivision where the infrastructure requirements would be less than what we require right now, under the subdivision regulations, unless the city agreed to finance those additional infrastructure, that increment of infrastructure city at large, in exchange for a certain percentage of the structures being committed as affordable, either owner-occupied or renter-occupied. I mean, that's the trade-off. You get additional public support for the, in the form of infrastructure, or the cost of infrastructure, in exchange for committing a certain percentage of your units as affordable.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Cup. And thank you to all the members of the committee, Katie's not here. You guys did some amazing work in a very short amount of time, and, you know, just solve the housing problem is, is not a big charge to take on, right? And for the rest of the commission, you guys have, now have a lot of information to consider about what some of our next steps could possibly be. But first, I just want to hear if there's any general comments about either what Commissioner Cup said, what Michael said, and then we can kind of consider what some of our next steps might be. This can't be everything's golden moment, y'all, really? Yes?
So a couple of things. So just the other day, I saw on the news, there was discussion about housing downtown, apartment complexes. How would this affect that? Is there any correlation?
I don't expect that anything that we're discussing tonight will affect that, because that's actually in the downtown districts and the D1 district.
Okay.
D1 district...
Say, without the downtown master plan, though, we would have been in this position, right?
Yeah, so one thing that is helping that is we, the city adopted the downtown master plan, and the city went out and initiated rezoning of large areas to D1, and that helped set all this up. That makes that project happen. And I don't know if they're using any other city incentives, I'm sure they're using something. It's a low-income housing tax credit project, so they're using those resources, but I believe they're also using some of our own incentives as well.
Yeah, they're also utilizing the RHID. I think that that's just a good example of, I understand that we are far behind on permitting and building housing, but I do think that some positive things are starting to come out of the incentives, and some of the strategic master planning downtown is a good example. So I do think it's, the projects are starting to trail some of those initiatives, it's just taken quite a bit of time.
Well, I mean, the downtown master plan is actually shining example of, it can work, you know, if we all are flowing in the right direction and using all of our resources that are available, it can work. To the advantage of the city, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, and that's two-hundred-and-fifty units. And I think, I don't know if all of it is affordable, but, yeah, it's all affordable, so that's a mix of sixty, forty percent AMI.
Yeah, so we tripled the number with that project.
Yeah.
So we're going to get over a hundred then? Is that the goal? Okay.
So... So the way I, you know, heard it on the news was, these folks have done it in other places, and they know how to make it pencil, they know how to play the game, basically. So I'd be curious, if they're experts, how these changes might affect the way they view Topeka as a place to invest elsewhere. Maybe they might provide some more input that even the committee would appreciate hearing, so I'd just throw that out as a thought.
On the subject of the water tower project, it's Union something or other, is the name of it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Union whatever. But I know, in order to create a district, I mean, you need to have the states sign off on it, and part of the state application process is a housing needs assessment. Is the 2020 study going to be the housing needs assessment?
It's a summary of it, but yes, that's where the information is pulled from. So it's tied to our policy.
The state will accept something that, it's only four or five years old, but they will accept that as the assessment?
Yes.
Good, good, good.
When will they stop accepting it?
Well, according to our demand and our need, I don't think anytime soon, unfortunately. Yeah, I think they're just kind of going back and forth across the need and the demand, and, yeah, we just, we update it annually to see permits, what was actually built, so we can show that there's still a void.
So are you wondering when, will there be a need to update the housing study?
Yeah, so those numbers were, I guess the housing study as a whole is something that Bryson and members of the team update parts and pieces of it, but as far as the numbers, as far as what the gap is and what we're, what we're seeing actually be produced, that is something that we are updating, because we turn that in every time we submit an application to Department of Commerce.
Yeah, there's an implementation program, which I think has been handed out, and that's all part of that, staying current with the housing study.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that in one second. Are there any other thoughts, questions by anyone? All right. Next steps. I noticed in some of the recommendations, they talked about the implementation matrix as one thing, according to what you talked about, you saw just two strategies, Michael, that we could really impact, or, I'm not quite sure what the relationship with, is with the implementation matrix versus what you just said in your presentation. Are you adopting all of the things in that, or Dan's like, nope?
So you want to address that?
So it was the committee's idea to include the implementation matrix in the document, and some of what we're talking about here fits within, I think, one of these, I don't know, I don't remember, something about expanding the number of units, or the target incentives to support quality housing development. There's a few things in here that these text amendments will implement, but not like all of these things.
Well, not all the things, there's just some that says planning on it very specifically. I think the number was seventeen.
Yeah, but I'm sure there were, I think, I totaled it up today, there were thirteen of the strategies or recommendations that referenced planning, and I understand that sometimes that means the planning department and not the planning commission, but the word planning was in there as the principles involved in implementing the strategy. And the thought was to assign to this committee or some other committee, just the mission of reviewing those thirteen items and seeing where things stand now four years, five years into the fray.
That seems fine, we can definitely provide some updates on some of this stuff.
To the committee.
Well, yeah, and I guess really, without much other conversation, I would like to recommend and figure out what is the best way to create a standing committee that, for housing or incentive... incentives, or whichever we want to call it. I don't, and I'm not sure if the committee has a preference as to what you should be called. Oh, okay. So, and what is the best way to go about doing that? I'm assuming our bylaws would need to be amended.
I guess I'm not sure of the question. We have an incentives committee that's been...
A standing one. One that doesn't go away after they, it stays, and it can collaborate and work with not only staff, but outside organizations as well.
I suppose we can investigate if that has to be a bylaws change or not. I, I guess I'm not sure. I think...
I think it does.
We can certainly look at that a little closer. I mean, I think the way it's operating now is, is fine, but yeah, I guess if we want to have a standing committee, we would have to look at that a little closer.
Well, the good thing about a standing committee is that they have an actual description that's much broader than a very specific project. And there'll be some continuity, continuity, once maybe one person rolls off, or someone doesn't end up being on there for 10 years, or, you know, there'll be terms and all of the other things that would need to be created with a standing committee versus a committee we just kind of, every once in a while, put together.
I, yes, I like that. I also have another thought, too. Something that we could probably do to be a little more helpful and maybe proactive is, so for example, we have a planning commissioner that has a seat on the MTPO. We have plenty of meetings like this that are open to people, I mean, anybody can come and join in on land bank meetings and kind of hear things that are going on. So, I think maybe proactively, we could do a better job, maybe Amanda can help me with that task, too, of getting out, like our homeless task force for housing services talks about aging in place and creating inclusive housing in our rehabilitation programs. So, I think there's a way that we can get you more information as well, just by understanding what resources are out there. But yes, I think also having a time that we can come back and talk about what we've learned and ask questions and see how those roles intersect would be helpful.
Madam Chair, they, you know, along those lines, it's, it would be possible to have members of the planning commission be ex-official members of the housing authority, the land, land bank, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, you know, any of all of those bodies, and be operating within the context of a standing, a standing committee. You know, we're well aware that this is not what the planning commission's done historically, okay? But housing is a critical issue in this town. And I, it pains me to say that I truly do believe it is a matter of life and death for some folks. And, and it's, we are an advisory body to the governing body, and, you know, it's, it's not an inconsequential role that we play as planning commissioners. There are things that the planning commission can do that, for whatever reason, we haven't done in the past.
No, I'm, I will keep pushing it. I'm historian, so I tell stories. Every morning on my walk, I walk by a certain area. I'm not going to say what that area is for fear these people will be ejected from their homes, but they live in bushes and in tents, and it is literally a whole neighborhood. I see these people every other day. One person, I saw him load up a shopping cart full of water jugs and go down and fill it up at a water fountain. We have a problem, so I have no problem asking these questions. And we'll keep at it as long as I'm sitting here. So, let's just, you know, work, row together, is what I'm hoping for.
No, no, I think that's great. I appreciate your, I appreciate the passion in the comments about it. The other hat that I wear when I'm not doing planning is housing services, and we're getting ready to implement a program called Built for Zero, and it's all about getting our homeless population down to functional zero. So, I spend the other half of my day completely invested in that, too. So, I, all the help we can get would be great.
Okay. So, to follow up and to get it on record, of the standing committee, what process, what can we find out by the next meeting, or in the next five, what the process would be?
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. We'll look at the bylaws and see, see what, what we're doing now and how we can shape that, put together maybe some options of what that looks like, or, yeah.
Awesome. Any other quest, Commissioner Brooks?
I like your idea. And then, the other thing is just, maybe you're gonna get to this, but I'm kind of a rubber-hit-the-road type of guy, so like, I like action. And, so, we're talking about some good ideas, I like them, so how do we get from talk to action? And maybe that's where we're heading, but it seems like, I know I'm probably getting ahead of myself.
Oh.
But, but, but let's talk about how to get there, in my opinion.
Well, the, and, yes, sir, that is kind of the next thing.
Okay, sorry.
No, it's fine. It's just like segue. The text amendments, the next steps on proposing, I understand you would like to have them vetted first.
So, let me clarify that, Madam Chair. So, the text amendments we presented tonight, those have been vetted pretty well, really, by the committee. We are asking that we go ahead and advertise a public hearing for September. I think we can do that, right? Our, our deadline for doing that is within the next couple of days. So, it would be on the September agenda for you to review, hold a hearing, and make a recommendation to the governing body. And then, some of those other things we talked about, the duplexes and the potentially as a, as a conditional use, those really require more stakeholder feedback, I would say, and, and we would start working on that as well. We have a number of text amendments we're working on, and, like the parking, the entire parking chapter, and just continuing to work on those things.
Do the, any of the commissioners have any objections to having hearings starting next month related to the text amendments?
No, you said it better.
You said words, I didn't hear it.
I'm sorry. I have a habit of not doing that. I said, no, I don't. I think the sooner the better.
All right.
Madam Chair, do you want a motion on this, or just want a consensus to put it on the agenda?
Yeah, I think it's just a consensus. I don't, I don't think we need a formal vote for this. We're just chatting. And, let's see, so, text amendments, bylaws, what am I missing, guys?
The only thing that I, I think, and this may be something we can do over email, just as far as what it would look like for the continuation of the committee, just from someone that I actually already sit on numerous boards in reference to multiple different facets of housing, I just would like a better understanding of what that would look like long-term. I don't think it's something we have to figure out tonight, but I definitely would like for the committee to be able to have some consensus in what the longstanding would look like. And also want it to be productive. I don't believe in having a committee for the sake of having a committee. So, if there's no issues to resolve, then we probably don't need to meet. But just making sure that it's an effective, impactful committee is something that I'm just really passionate about, and I'm sure you all are busy, and so having something else to monitor isn't probably something you want unless we're actively doing something. So, I don't know what those conversations are gonna look like, or when that...
Well, I can make a suggestion that the current committee members talk about what your scope of work could and should look like, and think about terms of longevity. How long really should, I have a pet peeve about that. How long should a person be on a committee like this? I believe in fresh blood. And just some basic functions of how you would operate. If you could come together and maybe by the time we talk about whether it's a bylaws thing or not, we would have some language to be able to put into the bylaws. Does that make sense? Okay. All right. Is there anything else we get regarding this topic?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to do this, but just in the interim, can this committee, the currently constituted committee, go forward and, and talking with staff, and maybe some additional vetting of ideas such as conditional use in the R1 district, and, and keeping tabs on the parking issue, and other things that we've talked about to date? Can we continue to do that, or do you want to put a pause on that?
No, you can continue to do that. I would say the priority is to form an actual committee with that. And again, working in partnership with staff, but yes, I still feel, you're not going anywhere right now. So, yes, continue to work.
Okay. Thanks.
And I'm assuming you'll continue to be the chair?
I'm sorry.
I'm assuming you'll continue to be the chair. Okay. Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is Land Use and Growth Management Plan 2040.
Commissioners, so this is truly a presentation. We're not asking for any, you know, action or anything like that. We're just trying to kind of set the stage. We've talked about last month about updating the land use growth management plan, and that's something we, we're gonna work on, but I think it's important that you understand what that document's about and what's in there, because I don't know that we have done this too much with you. So, so the, the overall vision of the document is really based in fiscal responsibility. So, it's about growing in a manner that doesn't harm existing residents, it's about growing in a way that you, is cost-effective and has all five city services. So, what are those five city services? Police, fire, sewer, water, and streets? So, if those are all addressed in a, in a cost, in, in that area, that is a good place to grow. So, the sustainable and the guise of this plan is really about compact development patterns, not extending out and, you know, and, and getting ahead of yourself, you know, make choices that are long-lasting, and then planned, just consider different factors when, when making land use decisions. Don't make it just be about this one thing that makes it great. What are the other issues that go along with that? So, the big change, there's a few big changes when this plan is...
Madam Chair, Dan, I'm sorry. I'm gonna endear myself to you even more. Could I ask a question regarding, before you switch over to this, just on the vision?
Sure.
And I'm sorry, but it's, it ties back to what we've been talking about this evening. The fiscal responsibility provision, that just jumped off the page for me. To say that we make, should make development decisions that don't physically, physically harm the city, that's, I, I don't know what, quite what to make of that, how you identify that. And we all know that when we plat a subdivision, unless they are houses that are in the upwards of 500,000 plus, they don't pay for themselves with through property taxes. Residential subdivisions that we plat are subsidized by industrial and commercial property taxes.
Correct.
We know that. So, I, I don't like this, I'm sorry, I, I just have a lot of trouble with the, with the language here, that, that say that that's part of the vision. We make decisions, good decisions, proper decisions, that can come to fruition only through subsidization.
So, I guess I'm not quite following here. I mean, this is, this is a broad statement here about growing where you've got all your services, so not growing where, oh, now we gotta come back and do this street improvement, you know?
I, I understand the first one, the cost-effective, the, you know, the, the compact development patterns and all that. I get that. I don't, I'm not on a crusade here, I really not. But, but to make, to make a, a statement in here as part of the vision, to say that development should not occur if it's gonna physically, physically harm the, the city, I, I don't know quite what the ramifications of that language is. And I know this is, this is the plan, but it's a vision statement, and it's, it drives, it drives other points.
I'll give you an example. You know, in previous versions of this city government, decisions were made decades ago about extending sewer and water lines outside the city.
Sure.
To serve a very low-density pattern of growth, and that didn't, that didn't make that growth cost-effective for the existing citizens in the city. So, that is an example where we just have to quit doing that. We have to quit extending these things out, and it's not, and it's not paying, and it's not being paid for with a dense development pattern. So, that's part of, it's not just, you know, one thing that makes it not affordable, there's all sorts of different things that were happening that were going against, you know, the city and their mill levy and all that stuff that was going on at the time. So, it's, you know, that's, it's not, it's not that that subdivision isn't cost-effective, it's, what's everything else that's gone along with that? You know, is the developer paying for that sewer line? Is the, is the developer helping to pay for that street? You know, it's things like that, that the city's not extending that infrastructure, the developer's gonna do it, you know, things like that, that are part of that fiscal responsibility for a city growth.
So, it sounds to me like it's more of a broader principle and not someone on city staff with a calculator.
So, not exactly, but we do a cost-benefit analysis for all of our annexations. And, yeah, it may not necessarily pencil out, but that doesn't mean the city's not gonna enjoy those property taxes coming from those houses, and, you know...
And those, and those cost-benefit analysis that we've done recently for annexations have looked at, at industrial, and maybe a commercial property, too. And, yeah, those, those are of benefit to the community at large, it's, it's on the plus side over the, over the span of years, right?
Right.
But, but a residential annexation would not...
Right. But you need residential development. You need that growth to, you know, provide housing for jobs.
It's the public good, it's the good for the community, and it, it shouldn't be, the dollar sign shouldn't drive whether or not that development decision is made.
Absolutely. But to some degree, there's other decisions that are being made that shouldn't be driven by the dollar sign, by certain committee, you know, certain departments of the government, you know, it's just, it's a broad policy here. It's nothing specific to...
Sure. Okay. So, you know, this is a description of what's in the plan, and we're talking about an update, so maybe there needs to be a little more nuance to the vision statement, and that can be discussed, right?
So, what you're seeing here is, is six bullets out of three pages of vision, right? And pillars of growth and all that. So, we really have to look at the whole document to really understand the, the whole vision that's in this plan, so this is just kind of a summary.
If, if development occurs at a public cost, that that cost is legitimate because it follows, it generates a public benefit. There's some public good associated with a public investment.
I think I agree with Michael on this one. It's an update at this point in time, so Commissioner Kopp, your point is duly noted, and you guys might look at creating a statement that is more acceptable? Or consider a statement?
Sure. We can consider some possible tweaks to the vision. But again, I would argue that you're not, you're not seeing much of the, the total vision in the document, you're just seeing a...
Yeah. I mean, once we get through it all, I'm sure, things will weigh out a little bit differently. But, but just to say, your, your observation has now been noted, and so, then we can go on and finish with the rest of the...
Well, in reality, I think what I'm saying and what Dan's saying, I think we're total agreement, it's just how things are said.
Right. And that's what I'm thinking, too. It's just you guys might have, use different language, but it's the same thing in the end. Possibly? Yes?
Yeah, I think that, yes, let's just, we can talk about it later.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the, as part of this document, so this was 2014, as part of this document, the city created an urban growth area. So, this, that's what this map is showing, there's the urban growth area kind of outlined in green, and then on that map, that cloud area that's around the city is, the city's three-mile area. So, this is, so the city has platting authority or dividing land authority out to that three-mile boundary. So, you know, well outside the city, we have authority on subdivisions. We zoom in a little closer to see exactly what these tiers mean and what the UGA means. So, tier one is part, that's the existing city limits, that's part of our urban growth area. That's important because tier one is where the city's made major investments in fire stations and water lines and sewer lines and streets. So, any value that we can capture in tier one through redevelopment will, will certainly pay for, help pay for itself fairly quickly and, and will really enhance... and will really enhance those investments that the city has made. So tier two is this area that's right outside the city. It's a very limited amount of land in tier two. And these are the areas that have these five services. And these are areas that are most ready for growth. And we'll show an example of that. And then we move on to tier three. So this is the kind of the next part of the urban growth area. These are areas that don't have all those services. They might have one, they might have a couple. And these are areas that aren't necessarily ready for annexation, but that doesn't mean we won't annex some of those areas. We've probably done that over the past few years because they've had enough of the services or there was just one more and that was getting addressed. So those are, that's tier three. And then that non-UGA area, that's the area between the urban growth area and out to the three miles. So some things that we did with this plan update was bring along code updates that changed the subdivision rules outside the city. And so that was approved, right, as, at the same time the Land Use and Growth Management Plan was approved. And it really addressed the plating exemption. So people can do a certain thing and they don't have to submit a plat to the city, which was if you had three acres and 200 feet of frontage, you, that was exempt from plating. And then, so what we did with the urban growth area is change that to 20 acres. So that land that's outside the city but within the UGA, that's 20-acre plating exemption. And then in the non-UGA area, we changed it. It's still three acres, but it's a 300-foot frontage and a depth-to-width standard. So, so, and I'll, you'll see some, you'll see a slide or two that's going to maybe explain that a little better. So I just want to focus on the tiers a little bit. So 12th and Lakeside, this is in tier one. This is in the existing city, obviously, around Fire Station Number 7. And that property previously was an electric substation and had been that for quite a long time. And so the developer here built two duplexes on that property and redeveloped that for multifamily. In this case, the property was zoned that way. It was zoned for multifamily. A number of those properties on that block are zoned that way and we have multifamily on that block already. It's kind of an interesting area. We've talked about missing middle and that kind of thing. This is a pretty, pretty good example of a missing middle development. It all kind of happened at different times, but you've got some multifamily here, now some duplexes. You've got some commercial, it's right there as well. So it's kind of an interesting area. Next example is 12th and Seabrook. So you can see Gage on the east there and 12th Street looping down as it's going to connect to Hontoon. That block has been vacant for decades. That, that block, for whatever reason, did not develop when everything else around it did. And so two or three years ago now, that same developer constructed eight homes on the, on that vacant land. And so now we've got eight single-family houses there where it was just vacant forever. Next example is tier two. So some of you were on the commission probably, or maybe not, when this plat came forward. This was Sherwood Village. So this was in, this was outside the city. So it was a major plat that required your review and approval and then also an annexation. So this was, since it was tier two, all the infrastructures there, those subdivisions around there have sewer, there's water. You know, the streets have been improved. This is a fairly old aerial. If we look at a new, a new aerial, an up-to-date one, there are house, that street's in and there's houses being built in that subdivision. So outside the city now, tier three and the non-UGA. So the previous plating exemption rules were three acres and 200 feet of frontage. So the picture on the left is what you get with three acres and 200 feet of frontage. That is what we, what we affectionately call a piano key development. And that's, that's the, if you count eight lots there, eight parcels there, that's 20 acres. So there's 20 acres there with eight lots. That will never be anything else. That will forever, forever be eight houses. That will not redevelop. So that was a real issue. That three acres, 200 feet of frontage is a real issue for the city's ability to grow in the future. So we changed the exemption rule to still three acres, 300 feet. It's probably made it a little harder to get exempted. But if they do need to plat, let's say they can't meet the exemption. So the two images on the right then are if you need to plat, this is the policy in the document that talks about what, what we kind of expect that to look like. So in most cases, not exactly every case, but in most cases, we want an 80/20 arrangement here. So the 20% is, you can put as many, many houses in that 20% as you can do. Maybe there's actually a sewer line in front of that property. It's way out in the county, but there happens to be a sewer line there. So maybe they can put three or four on that 20%. And then the 80 is being reserved for future development. So you could still put a house on that. So the whole idea then is at some point in the future, that could transition to an urban development. So it's the same 20 acres that's built out with streets and houses. So again, on the left, that will never, that will never redevelop. So we really needed to find a way to start preserving some land outside the city. So this example is a plat outside the city. These minor plats, you don't see these minor plats. So it's five acre, five lots or less, and we process those administratively. So this example is a kind of a classic 80/20. They've, you know, they've got the 20 and the 80 that's set aside. If they, if they'd come, if they had tried to do this before 2014, they would have got three lots that would have piano keyed out, that frontage, and, and that would have been it. So with the changes, they could not get an exemption by creating a lot. So they had to plat and then, so we did an 80/20 here and that's the result of that plat. So they still get two, but they could have possibly have gotten three under the old exemption. So the land use plan has future land use element. This is the map. There's a map in the document. There's a, you know, five or six pages of descriptions for all those different colors. This is sort of the 30,000-foot view. We, you know, you see, you see a review of the future land use and all the zoning cases that come before you. This is generally the map that's being used in the descriptions. That white space is, those are neighborhood, neighborhoods that have a neighborhood plan that has a future land use. So we don't use that map for the neighborhoods. We use their future land use map. So as they go through a planning process, a specific planning process, we develop future land use plans. So these are actually block-to-block future land use. So much more specific than the, than the overall future land use. So, and these also, there's descriptions for all of these. So if you, if we do a rezoning case in a neighborhood, we'll try to make sure that if they've got a neighborhood plan, we'll use the neighborhood plan, not the, not the growth management plan. And then the last thing is annexation. So generally speaking, if it's, if a property's contiguous, it's developing to an urban standard, urban density, we expect that to be annexed. We, so this example here, you can see the outline of a, of a plat in Sherwood, something, whatever that plat was. It's been probably three or four years now. And then the Washburn Rural Middle School, that's been annexed too. So both of those cases came before you. The plat was a major plat and then the annexation. What we do here that not, maybe only one or two other communities in Kansas do is, planning commissions aren't typically involved in annexations. The state law for a consented annexation is just to go to the governing body for approval. If it's 10 acres or more, this plan talks about bringing those to you to review the land use and growth management stuff. Not to recommend approval on the annexation, but to talk about, you know, land use. So, so yeah, overall, that's, that's the, you know, high-level view of the plan. The, this was brought up last month, the Land Use and Growth Management Plan. We are committed to do an update. And there's some, there's a few things in there that we, we can tweak just to make Mike's life a little easier and just some things that are, you know, we can update the data and get into some of the policies a little bit. But yeah, so that's the comp plan. There's a nice video online. I don't know if everybody's seen that. If you go to the Land Use and Growth Management 2040, there's an eight-minute video in there. It's worth watching if you, if you really want the, what the, what the whole thing was about 10 years ago. It's pretty good.
Thank you for that update. Are there any questions for Dan? Yes, Commissioner Kopp?
Dan, on the, the future land use map, the yellow is low-density residential. Does that mean single-family or is it a broader term?
I'm trying to remember. I think we might have a density standard in there that could be duplex also. You know, I think we have a six to some, maybe four to six dwelling units. So it's possible the policy could support duplexes in that yellow. I'm not positive about that, but I seem to remember our density maybe isn't a single family.
One other question, the piano key lots in the unincorporated area, are you seeing more of those lots being created in the non-UGA area or can you track?
No, so we, in the, in that area that's between the urban growth area and the three-mile, we don't get a lot of exemption requests because it's hard, it's a little harder to meet. It's much harder to meet that standard than it was just three acres and 200 feet of frontage. But, but we get them, but you, we're, we're processing more plats because people want to divide property. We're not doing a lot of exemption reviews.
Single lots subdivisions?
Usually two or three, yeah.
Thank you.
Hopefully, this isn't a burdensome question. I'm just curious. We have a lot of CUPs. Will this update be looking at some of our current uses and based on historical data from what we've been doing and making changes? Will that help correct some of that? Especially if there's an area that is skewing toward one way, but in the plan, it's definitely something else?
I know that there's some areas that our future land use map doesn't quite have right. So I know we're going to try to fix some of that just based on what's on the ground. I don't know how we can, I'm not sure how we can look at it from if an area is transitioning to something different with this update. But I think we can try, I do know we, I do know there's some things to fix on that map.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. Like you said, I feel like we just have CUP after CUP. And is it just because that area is not what they thought it was going to be 10 years ago? Go for it.
Well, I think it's, yeah, so we, I think it's PUDs that we get a lot of.
PUDs, I'm sorry. I keep saying C, cups. I don't know why I always want to call them cups, but they're not.
Right. Yeah, you know, we do those, those are usually, so I'm just thinking of some examples like Washburn, Potwin Lofts was a PUD and the Scooters up north on Topeka Boulevard was a PUD. Those are such small properties that that really probably had more to do with density or, or variances for setbacks and stuff like that. I think the PUDs are generally more property-specific and not because our land use plan is saying something. It's more just, you know, geez, we can't, we can't get that setback to work or that density or the parking or...
Okay. But there will be some consideration.
Yeah, we're going to look at that map, for sure.
Are there any other questions? Well, thank you, everyone, for your time and attention. It's not as, as exciting as a regular meeting, but I feel like we got some good work done tonight. Are there any other questions or thoughts before we adjourn? Were there any requests for public comments during that?
I might just share one, one update. So I think as a few of you know, we have, we have two planning commissioners that are coming to a close of their stay here with us. So just letting you know that we are working with the mayor's office. We've received a few applications for people that are interested. So we'll continue to review that and work with them to make sure that we find some good fits because, yeah, we're all about to be too short here after our next meeting. So just want to share.
I'm our current representative on the MTPO Policy Board. And just one thing to make you all aware of, Wednesday night this week, or afternoon and evening, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., there is a public meeting for the update to the pedestrian master plan. So that'll be at the Topeka Library, Topeka Shawnee County Library. But anyway, you're all welcome to come out to that. One of the things going on with the MPO is taking a look at the condition of all the sidewalks in the city and then developing a plan for moving forward, so.
And what time again is that?
4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the library. On Wednesday.
On, in one of the auditoriums?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I don't think I, this meeting's adjourned.